Meeting to order. Rebecca, will you please call the roll?
Gandy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
And so, the public might not be able to hear Rebecca on the roll call, but everyone is here. Any changes?
Martha's not here.
Oh, yeah, Martha's not here. You're right. Sorry about that.
I should have told her.
Martha's not here. She's not planning to come? Is that correct?
I'm not.
I had not heard.
Yeah, we haven't heard. We probably should have talked to her about calling in. We have a speakerphone. If you, if somebody does not feel well or wants to, they can certainly call in and we'll put them on the speakerphone for, for the extraordinary circumstances, that is acceptable through the state code.
Okay, great. Counsel, are there any changes to the agenda tonight? Okay, I'm gonna add just one additional appointment under the mayor's report, but we'll get to that. So, let's get to the consent agenda. Approval of the minutes of the March 9, 2020 council meeting. Approval of the March 2020 payroll in the amount of 142,909.69. Approval of USDA Step 1 debt in the amount of $25,950. Approval of COBANK interim financing debt in the amount of $81,810.38. Approval of the January 2020 finance report. Approval of the February 2020 finance report. Resolution of employment in the Park and Recreation Department for Melissa Dill and Ross Emanuel. Acceptance of the library board minutes. Approval of liquor license for Fairfield Fest, Fairfield Fast and Fresh and the Veterans Club. And approval of total claims in the amount of $196,437.11. And there are no claims more than $75,000.
Will we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Moved by Flornoy, second by Toohill. Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Okay, so at this time, we have no other public appearances. So, we'll go down to the resolutions. Action items and ordinances. We have three resolutions here all related to accepting block grants. The first one is consideration of agreement for a surface transportation block grant, federal, or excuse me, program federal aid swap project, for this is for Highway 1 South. And, let me get there. The total estimated project costs are $5,768,084. So, this is the amount up to Fillmore on Highway 1 South. Anybody have any questions?
Just could, Aaron, address the potential funding sources? Are we short 1.5 million at this time?
Yes, we're still looking at some, some other ways to, to fund it. Melanie's gonna be better off, better able to answer those questions in, in more specific details. But, yes, we're still looking at ways to fund it. We're, there's other pots of money that we're looking at to help fund with that. We'll, we'll come up with that extra money prior to construction.
When do we start?
I think it's 2022? 2022.
We have a couple of years to go.
Yeah, we have a couple of years. This is, we're in design phase right now, so we've got plenty of time to really come up with a, a good plan to fund the rest of it.
This is all gonna be done with conjunction with the intersection.
Yeah, that's all, that whole, that whole Highway 1 project, that's what it is. It's that whole project from Libertyville up to Fillmore.
Okay.
Avenue or street, whatever we came upon this earlier. Jason said it was avenue.
All right. Is there a motion to accept this grant?
Hello?
So moved?
Move by Gandy, second by Ham.
This is Aaron Quaker.
Any other discussion? Rebecca, please call the roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yep. Hank?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Let you, put you on speakerphone.
Okay, that first resolution approved unanimously. And I think...
Just stand by on the phone, okay?
We may be going...
Go ahead. We'll get to that here in a second.
Okay. Want me to go on? Okay.
Let's just go through it. We're about there.
Okay. So, the next one is a block grant for the North 4th Street project. So, that's from the tracks to Broadway on 4th Street, the amount of $715,772.
Motion to approve.
Okay, approved by Anderson?
Second.
Second by Toohill. Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Anderson?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Okay, that was approved unanimously. Last one, this one is again, consideration of agreement for a surface transportation block grant. This is on 36, 32nd Street from, I think it's Jack Pine Loop to Burlington, in the amount of $813,000. Any discussion? Entertained a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Toohill?
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Toohill?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Okay, that motion was proved unanimously. Okay, now we're gonna go to the public hearing on the matter of nuisance abatement schedule of assessments.
Okay, on, on the phone, we have Larry Slocum. He's, he wants to address the council regarding the, the nuisance abatements for his, his, it was a tree removal out of his property.
Okay. So, we are gonna open the public hearing.
I can, I can hear you. Who am I speaking with?
This is Aaron Quaker. Go ahead and, the council, the council...
I know, but who, who exactly am I speaking with? How many people are there and what's going on?
The city council is here. We are in session. Every council member minus Martha Rassellson is here. So, you are addressing the council for the public...
And how many people are there?
How many people are here?
Yeah.
Ten of us, ish?
Wow. Okay. All righty. Well, you're brave people. The, okay, how can I, how can I address the issues associated with this tree removal in a, hopefully, a very civilized and easy, easy way going? Can I answer questions? Would you like me to tell you the whole story? What exactly would you like to know?
Well, you are, you're contesting the, the abatement, so...
Well, what exactly is an abatement?
Well, the, the abatement is the nuisance that was taking down your tree.
This is one of 508 West Harrison.
Well, okay, well, you're gonna get me going. Okay. I, I was originally contacted by Scott Brown, associated with taking down the tree. And I told him that I would hire a tree evaluator, a tree, a knowledgeable tree person who removes trees and trims trees here in town, has a business here in town. And basically, we went back and forth on this for some time, and then I, then I, Scott Brown was gonna come and remove the tree, or the city was gonna come and remove the tree. So, I hired this person to actually remove the tree. And, and he was gonna do it at a rate which was still high for me, 'cause I'm on a fixed income and, and, you know, I don't think Scott Brown really could understand the fact that a person on a fixed income can own a home and, and not have the money to spend, you know, thousands of dollars to remove the tree. It was, seemed to be beyond the scope of, of understanding. So, anyway, that person had his truck parked on my tree, I think it was two days before the scheduled time of the city to come and do it, right? He said I didn't have to really remove the tree, that I could trim it and basically take all, there was nothing that was ever hanging in the neighbor. It was strictly a neighbor's whim, you know, you might say. And, but he agreed to, to take it down, to trim it for $500, for under $500, and to take it down under the ground for $950. So, I contracted him to go ahead and just take it down for $950, but I really only wanted to trim it, and, 'cause that's what the tree expert had indicated was necessary. Okay? Meanwhile, you know, I'm, you know, getting threats or whatever by Scott Brown and the city clerk. So, 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 somebody, he had his truck parked on my property to do the job of exploiting, I think it was one day before the city was gonna come, eventually came. And, and somebody, according to him, somebody from the city, a high-ranking city official, ordered him to remove this truck from my property. And, and so, he complied with that, the demand, because he felt that it was in his best interest, as a member of the business community in Fairfield, that he basically had better do that. So, he removed the truck, advised me of the situation, wouldn't identify with city official. I suspect it was either the then-mayor or Scott Brown. I really don't know who it was, actually. And, and then, two days later, the city guys came and did it without informing me that all they intended to do was what I had originally proposed, was to trim the tree. All they did basically was trim the tree. I've got a 12-foot tree trunk sitting up there in the wind right now, and then they charged me, not what he was gonna charge me to trim the tree, which was under $500, or to bring it down to the ground and, and chop up a meter for $950, but they charged me, I think it was 20, $2,800. And, and basically, you know, I, the reason why I have also been fairly slow in all this all along is because I'm fixed-income social security type of person, lived in Fairfield for 40 years, and I don't have any money. And that's a fact. And so, and so, he basically, so now we're having a bill set back and forth for $2,800, when I had a conversation with the mayor just before this, with them there, just before this happened, and he basically agreed with me, the city shouldn't charge me anymore than what a private contractor was gonna charge me. He agreed with that principle. So, right now, I'm, I'm, to me, a $2,800 bill from the city, other than a pleasant, almost humorous discussion, you know, is, is basically not only ridiculous because of the circumstances. So, during the time that they were going out there chopping the tree down, I went out there, because I, I have a heat-loving stove that I use wood a lot, which, you know, to try and cut my costs, you know, in the winter. And so, I went out there and then chopping the wood on the tree and everything like that. And, and I said, "Well, you know, guys, I'll save this a work, and all she gotta do basically is just throw the wood over there, pile up over there, and I'll have somebody come and chop up for me for firewood." And, and they looked at me and says, "We can't do that." And I says, "What do you mean, you can't do that? You're on my property, you're chopping down my tree, and you just can't leave my wood where I, where I direct you to do it?" And they said, "No, we can't. We're under orders," I don't know who that was from, "to take the wood away." And I said, "Well, look, I've got a heart condition. I've got four heart operations in the last four years, and I can't do anything other than direct people to actually chop this wood up at my expense." And they put the whip in there and said, "Well, we're gonna take the wood over to, to our city dunker," whatever it was, "and they need to come over there and get it." I said, "I can't come over anywhere and get any," you know? And, and they, and, you know, and so, and so, that was the response from the city crew of the, you know, was that they wanted orders to take the wood away. They had to, they were still, I'm still thinking that they're chopping it down, the lost lamb and the, and the pasture, I don't know anything about what's going on. And the reality was is they had no intention to chop it down. They had an intention of, of taking it away, almost as a punitive measure. And I had to go get it from some other location, even though I'm standing one foot away from the tree, when I'm telling them this. And, and so, they had no, and they had no intention to even remove the tree. All they were doing was take it off the top half of the tree and trim it, making essentially an eyesore out of, out of, out of the deal. And, and then, and that was totally, in my view, punitive.
Is this in the city right away?
And so, I have a, I have a bill for trimming the tree for $2,800, which is an most unbelievable arrogance you could imagine. And, and so, basically, now, the tree still says, "Hannah, out there, you want money from me for $2,800, and I had people who were willing to do exactly the same thing for $500, and you chased them off my property." Where is the fairness or intelligence in that? And that's pretty much my story, you know? I mean, I think some of, some of this had to be associated with, with the length of time it took me to, to get this work done or the city to come, come to it. But basically, I tried to explain to the surround that, that basically, this is my economic schedule. This is my life, you know? Social security check in America, the average one is around $14,000 to $15,000 a year. And the people who live on that can't even afford house insurance usually. And so, I've owned this house for 40 years, and I'm really, really thinking about looking out of this town with, with this type of experience. I would gladly respond to any questions.
Counsel, have any questions?
Who, who told him that the, that his private guy couldn't cut it down?
I believe Scott Brown.
Okay.
Why is that?
I think it was because of the length of time that we'd been working with Mr. Slocum to get the tree cut down, and then...
Yeah, but that, that, that couldn't happen, 'cause I had somebody here to do it. And, and basically, he was, he was basically, he, you know, he was contracted to do it, that's what he did for a living, and he said he didn't even have to do it. He said there were no ashboards left in the tree, they'd all left.
Mr. Slocum?
The tree was solid. He just took, took down the top third of the tree, and there was no complaint with it to a neighbor.
Larry, okay, we, we heard you. Now, let me, let me tell, tell as much of the story as I can for Scott. We, we had been working with Mr. Slocum for probably about a year, I believe, to get that tree taken down, because there was a nuisance complaint. It was also, there's a number of the branches and stuff were dead that could fall on somebody else's property or cause damage to other people, so...
Actually, that, that statement is a little bit interesting, in that they would have already trimmed the branches that were associated with this property. But now, of course, if you're not asking me about it, and the only branches that were in there were threatening my house and my structure. I, I don't, you know, I don't agree with you, but the tree...
Okay, Larry. Hang on, Larry. Larry, hang on.
Let me finish. Let me finish, 'cause I'm, I'm, this is my only shot. I'm in agreement with you that the top of the tree needed to be trimmed, right? But, I'm, I, you know, on to my property, not the neighbor's property at all, on my property. And, and basically, I was willing, and I hired somebody to do that. I was willing to pay, even though I, I'm not partial cash, I was willing to pay to have that done. And it could only be described as either hubris or vengeance or whatever, that you would, that it would be a $2,800 bill for a $500 tree trimming project, and the mayor, the then-mayor at that time, agreed with that principle.
Doug, go ahead.
So, who decided the tree had to come down in this totality?
That was, that was between Scott with the nuisance abatement and then...
Our nuisance guy decided the whole tree had to come down.
I think we even brought it to council to make, make the deter, after the number of times that we tried to contact Mr. Slocum to, to approve that.
April 8th of 2020.
What's that?
It's the April 8th of 2020, the county report.
Yeah, April 8th of 2020, he brought that to the council.
19.
Or 19. And then, and then we went to that process of...
We told him to cut it down?
Cut it down, correct. And then, and that didn't happen, didn't happen, didn't happen. So, then, we, we set a date when we got to that time where it was going to happen, then somebody else was in the driveway, saying that I'm gonna do it. I believe, I, I can't remember the whole story, but I believe that that person had told Scott the, "Well, yeah, I'm probably gonna do it at some point in time," or something or other, so we just said, "No."
I can't believe that. I can't believe that at all.
So, then we just said, "Nope, the deadline is now, we're gonna cut it down." Now, it's been a full year since we did that, and we, we offered to set up payment plans and stuff like that. He, he came in and made one $10 payment and said, "I'mma take us to court." Okay. But, we haven't seen anything or haven't done any sort of, we've tried to set up payment arrangements a couple of times to get this taken care of and gone. So, that's why, at, at this point, we've gone through a lot of that to go through.
So, when was the first time notice was given of the tree being a nuisance?
It was in 19 sometime, I'm not sure.
Is there where you can find out?
I think Rebecca's going to get it.
Okay.
I'm still pursuing that option if I have to, because I believe...
He's gonna be quiet so we can have a discussion.
Larry? 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 We need to have a discussion about this. We're trying to have a discussion.
I, I quietly listen to you. When you make a point that I'm questioned, I'm gonna respond back to you. And all, all I know about the communication between evidently Scott Brown and the Billy, Billy, the, the tree, tree guy, was that he was absolutely ordered, even though I had, was ahead of the date that the city mandated for chopping the tree down, he absolutely ordered him off of my property, you know? And I was willing to pay that guy a handsome sum of money to do it.
Okay.
And now, I'm seeing a much larger amount of money. When the city official retired, the mayor indicated to me, he thought it was appropriate and said that the city billed me for the amount that the contractor was gonna charge.
Okay.
Who, who was the contractor?
Who was your contractor, Larry?
Mine was Billy at Bascom.
Bascom?
Bascom Tree Service.
Tree Service.
Here in town, been here for a while, is highly regarded, and, and he, he actually inspected the tree and told me I had to do nothing more to the tree, other than trim it back in the way, actually, that it was, that was actually done by, by your contractor.
Okay. Larry, we're, we're done. We don't have any more questions for you, so we're going to discuss this now, okay?
Sounds fair. Appreciate you letting me do it, to talk to anybody in the city about this. I've, I've been very frustrated about it. I'm willing to pay my share for what is, to an appropriate, but I feel like I've been accused by this process all along.
Okay. Thank you, Larry.
So, he received, he received a letter that gave him a date certain that had to be cut, taken down by?
Rebecca, are you able to establish a timeline through that paperwork back there?
Those are all the bills that we sent him.
So, do you have any idea from like...
I did know the tree on May 1st.
On May 1st was the actual cut down of the tree, of 2019?
Yes.
And, to get to that point, we probably sent...
A lot. We, we, we...
Three letters, five letters?
I, I don't remember what the exact process is, but we bend over backwards to not do it for somebody else. We, we would prefer them to do it.
So, does this get billed on his property taxes, or does he have to pay it upfront?
This will be put onto his property taxes af, now that we're, we're, since we're to this point, it'll go onto the property taxes.
Do we know when the first notice was sent? Do you have somebody on the first notice was sent that this tree was a nuisance?
Uh, I don't know exactly what that date is.
Is it possible to move this to committee for another review?
We, we've already, this process, it was cut down on May of 19, so we're now...
With city council approval?
Yes.
Like we voted to cut it down?
Yes.
And it's $2,800, what we would normally charge anybody to cut down a tree?
For, for that process, depending on the size of the tree and stuff like that.
So, it's an hourly rate?
Yeah. It, it's, Brown Tree Service does that for us.
That's what I thought. We hired Brown to do this kind of work, though.
Correct.
So...
I vaguely remember moving this through.
I can't remember it, but...
It's been, it was a while, and, and that's part of the problem. It's, it's gone on for this long, and that's why it's finally coming to the, he, he's inaccurate. He did have a conversation with me, which he wasn't very happy with my response either, as far as going through this, because he, he has talked to me also.
So, is this fee here, 2,790, is what Brown charges us?
Right.
And we're just passing it along? We're not adding any additional fees onto it?
Not that I, I don't believe so, no.
I remember Scott came, he was very frustrated with the process, and he wanted the council to vote, so he felt that he had complete authority to move forward. We did.
Well, we told him to do it, so this is the result.
I remember approving it, but I, I think it'd been going on for quite a while.
Yes.
Originally, it was before I was even on council.
These, these things do linger on for a long time, frequently.
And, and like I said, the reason we told, we will probably, if, if, if that, his contractor would've said, "I'm gonna get it done today," we probably would've said, "Okay." But I think it was a thing of...
Iffy?
Yes. And that's how, what happened kind of through this entire conversation. It was kind of an iffy deal. Maybe gonna do this, or I'm not gonna do that, you know? It was just a long, drawn-out process where we finally had to put our foot down and say, "This is what we're gonna do, and this is now, that we're gonna do it now."
I would say if we voted on it as a council and told Scott to refer with it, that we need to stand behind the bill.
What happened was he was there, Scott showed up with his equipment, or Brown showed up with his equipment to cut it down, or?
Something to that effect. Yeah. We said something, we said something to the effect of, "When are you gonna do it? Well, I'm not sure when we're doing it. I don't know if I am gonna do it." I, I could be completely wrong on some of those details, because it wasn't just, it wasn't me, but those are the, what I recall as the details.
Well, the bottom line is the guy that was there could've cut it down if he wanted to.
Right.
He was there.
If he'd have done it then.
The, the $500 quote and the $2,800 quote is quite a gap. Does, does he have any recourse? I mean, I'm not trying to throw anybody into the bus who delayed any longer than we have to, but does he have any recourse to go back to Brown?
Does he have any recourse?
To go back to Brown?
No.
The $500 was just for trimming.
It'll come back to us.
And that's all they did too, right?
Take it down to the...
No, they just trimmed it, right?
Right.
Looks like John has a comment there.
Here you go, John.
Yeah, Mr. Slocum, my name is John Morrissey. I'm city attorney. I'm included in this hearing just by virtue of sitting in the room. And I, I just want you to understand that you were sent, I'm holding in my hand, three different...
He's not on the line anymore.
Oh, he's not listening?
No, he hung up.
Oh, all right.
He could be watching livestream.
All right. Well, for purposes of this discussion, there's three certified mail slips. There's also a note that Amanda checked with the tracking at the U.S. Postal Service, and the mail item was being held per the customer. That's Mr. Slocum's request. So, he doesn't wanna see the notice. Then he gets concerned about it after we've got the crew, and the crew, he actually was charged $1,200 for tree removal. But, he was also charged for us mobilizing an end loader, a dump truck with an operator, and public works employees that helped remove the tree from the site. So that's the difference. The end loader with operator ended up being eight hundred dollars. The dump truck with operator ended up being, uh, six hundred dollars. Uh, public works employee labor was two hundred dollars. There was apparently a credit for a check he paid of ten dollars. Twenty seven hundred ninety dollars is what this came out to. And essentially, uh, it does seem like if he'd have been, um, with Scott on this, instead of ignoring his mail, uh, maybe something could've gotten worked out. I've done nuisances practically every month since Scott's been our employee with Scott, and Scott will try to work things out if possible. We got a lot of cases up at the courthouse that get to be a year or two old before the nuisance is resolved. So somebody just took a hard stance in this situation and didn't wanna talk very much with Scott, is my opinion.
What are the dates of those?
Those might be the bills, the certified letters.
They should have dates on them, those.
Yeah. We sent him, we sent him the certified letter as far as this was concerned, two or three times, and he let them sit there because.
What does it say in the certified receipt?
Uh, the cert, the certifies are. February twenty seventh of twenty twenty. I do think, uh, Aaron's correct about probably the bills being sent. March fourth of twenty twenty.
Those are the collection money, though.
Yeah.
Were you asking about the tree being cut down?
The actual letters.
I'm not seeing any letters. Well, excuse me, I'll take that back. There was a February nineteenth letter, uh, explaining that they'd been trying to get him to do something, and that he could come to City Hall up to March twentieth of twenty twenty. And they'd still talk with him about this. Uh, or he could come to the, uh, meeting tonight, and talk about it as far as, but again, these go back to the bills.
Right.
Scott had, uh. I'm sorry, everything I have in my hand has to do with things that resulted in the charge. They were done after Scott had attempted to get him to take it down without having to involve the city crew. And the city crew is usually the last resort. That's all I will say on that.
And is it the understanding, I mean, the tree is down. It's not been trimmed, it's gone, correct?
I, I think, I think we trimmed everything but the main trunk, is what I think, and, and that very well could be. The re, the, there were other reasons why we didn't leave the branch, the wood there. He, he has had issues with nuisance complaints with piles and piles of wood in his yard causing pro, that are considered nuisances also. So that's why we weren't gonna leave the, the piles of wood there. He already had, I think he already had a pile, and that would've just created more of an issue.
And it's the neighbors who were commenting about the, the previous?
I would guess that's where the complaint originated from.
This is all twenty twenty correspondence. The tree was taken down on May first of two thousand nineteen. And it looks like, uh, the tree removal at that time, uh, again, when I say it's a last resort, that the city did it. Uh, the tree removal in May of two thousand nineteen, I think, Becca, you said something about the earlier correspondence was in the spring of. April eighth of two thousand nineteen. Uh, if there were branches falling off the trees, I'm sure there was communication within the neighborhood that prompted Scott to go get after this. And sometimes that's just the way it works, but it was already removed for nearly a year before these pieces of correspondence about the collection process and the assessment process. So, that's my two cents worth.
So if we approve all these nuisances tonight, they'll go onto the property taxes and be billed over a period of time?
Correct. It'll go on their property taxes. I'm not exactly up to speed on how that happens, but yeah, it'll go on their property taxes.
We approve this list of nu, nuisances as presented, I guess.
Do we have enough information to make that decision? I, I understand, uh, Katie had said we had made a decision earlier to remove the tree. I just wanna make sure that we have enough information. Cause I was, I was trying to get at when he was first notified. What I was trying to get at is when he was first notified that this tree was a nuisance.
We know it was before April of twenty nineteen.
Right. How, how long before? We don't know that.
I would say, I, I would say months, because.
I, I believe it was in twenty eighteen, because I think I came on council early twenty nineteen and.
We were just wrapping it up.
It was, it happened before that.
You sure of that?
Ninety-nine percent sure, because when he came back, it was the second, second or third time he'd been back, and it was the first time that I'd seen him.
But if we, if someone came to us and specifically asked for permission to cut this tree, tree down, it must've been going on for a while, is my guess.
We don't know, yeah, we don't wanna cut somebody's tree down. That's not what we normally do. You know, Scott does work with people. For lack of a better term, we don't wanna be the Gestapo when it comes to stuff like this. So we really want to get, work with people to get stuff done.
It's like the mowing charges, we don't wanna.
No, we don't wanna do it. We try and work with them. We try and work with them. They get, we, we, we extend our nuisance abatement process. I, I think quite a bit to be.
Accommodating.
Accommodating. That's a good way to put it.
I know we do. I just, I'm just concerned that we, I would think we'd have a little better record of when we gave notice. I'm concerned about adding a twenty eight hundred, this, this, obviously, this citizen's pretty, pretty upset. I'm concerned about adding a twenty eight hundred dollar bill to his property tax, and we can't give them, we can't give them a timeline of when we first gave him notice to remove the tree.
I would venture a guess we can. We just can't do it. I can't do it right this minute. Uh, I, I, I know we've got all the correspondence somewhere in a file.
This is one of the reasons we had included our rules of procedure, that if you want that kind of information at a council meeting, you gotta ask for it before noon the same day. You gotta give city staff time to, to get this stuff. You can't just pull it out of, out of their minds.
Yeah, I, I probably should've had some forethought to help you out on that. I'm sorry. But yeah, I, I would tell you, we have, our, our standard policy is we keep correspondence and keep records of when we're sending initial things. And all this goes through John to get approval prior to us coming to council for the removal, and then the process of collecting the bill too.
Do you think Scott would have any recollection if we surprised him and pulled him in on a phone call?
Uh, I don't know if he could give you dates, but he would give you a more detailed. We, we did a lot of the, a lot, he would, he could give you a more detail to how much he bent over backwards to help Mr. Slocum.
I've seen him coming in with records before, you know, inches thick on one property.
I'm confident we can produce the records if that's what, I mean.
I don't doubt.
If you wanna know the timeline, we probably can't do it tonight, but I'm confident, cause I remember when Scott came to us, he walked in with a folder.
I'm, I'm gonna suggest that we go ahead and vote tonight on this, and then we can rescind it if he cannot produce, reconsider it at that time.
I'm going to, just to let you know, I'm probably not gonna vote for that motion, because I think we oughta have, I mean, the idea of referring it to committee to get the date and timeline would be, if we have that information, it'd be worthwhile to have so that we can have that vote and not have to go back and possibly rescind it, but that's my two cents.
I have one more question. Has the house been occupied by a renter or anybody, or is it sitting empty this whole time?
No, Larry lives there. Larry lives at that house.
He's just out of the state right now?
No, he's at home. His phone call today, sit, before, he wanted to extend the date because he was self-quarantined because he was sick.
Okay. I, okay, I'm sorry. I was looking at.
The letter that says I'm in Louisiana.
Yeah. Oh, yes.
That, that's a different, different topic.
Oh, that's a different one, okay.
Okay. That helps me a lot, cause I, I took it that he was out of town too. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so there is a motion on the floor to approve, uh, well, I guess we need to close the public hearing.
Yep.
Two.
Oh.
Mr. Lewis and Will Banks.
Okay.
You have another, uh, item from a lady named Nancy Will Banks. And Nancy's is quite a bit different. She's filed something she calls a notice and demand to cease and desist assessment for nuisance abatement and demand for validation of assessment and conditional acceptance of notice of hearing upon proof of claim. Administrative remedy procedure. And then she has four pages, which, what I, what I think she did is she borrowed this from a federal case in Kansas. And it's a case about, um, uh, improper or unlawful collection practices by a creditor in Kansas that made it all the way to the Federal Court of Appeals. Our jurisdiction as far as enforcing nuisance under our local ordinance hasn't been through any of the exhaustive remedies that would get this into federal case status. This hasn't been in small claims court. There is no pending proof of claim. She basically made this up as far as borrowing somebody else's form and plugging in her circumstance. And then she sent us a conditional check that can be cashed upon proof of claim, which it was sent with for three hundred and five dollars, which happens to be the amount of her abatement charge. So, uh, I prepared a letter, and I think it was attached to what, uh, was in the, uh, agenda copies tonight, telling her that what she borrowed this from has nothing to do with enforcement of municipal ordinances, that we've been using the assessment process for, ever since Home Rule, uh, uh, existed in Iowa, and that, uh, whatever she believes she's entitled to as far as due process of law, that our records show that she's been noticed several times, and that this just has to do with, uh, mowing bills that she ignored, uh, through the times notices were sent to her, and that our process for collecting those, uh, is to assess it against the property tax. And, uh, anyway, my couple of page letter responding to her four-page demand, uh, I think was provided to you also. At the end of my letter, I urged her to, instead of paying us with a conditional check, just pay this and avoid the tax sale. So that's our recommended city response. Uh, we don't enjoy having people's property sold at the tax sales, but this sort of invites the inevitable, so.
So that house is unoccupied, or is it rented here in Purfue?
Well, she's, she's in Arkansas. I don't know if there's somebody renting it or not.
I think your letter is pretty clear. Your responses.
See the letter from.
Pretty clear.
It's under reply.
The reason I'm asking about the renting is because if the house is being rented, then there's income to help offset these. But if they're letting it sit empty, then they're not generating the income that could, could help them get out of the bind that they're in. I realize not everybody wants to be a landlord, but it would sure help them if.
Right. Mi, uh, Ms., I don't know the situation with Ms. Will Banks. As far as Mr. Slocum, Mr. Slocum is on social security.
Right.
He lives in that house.
Right. I did gather that.
Yeah, and he, he actually told me at one time that he doesn't have homeowner's insurance on it because he can't afford it.
Okay.
That's, that's, that's the long and short of Mr. Slocum's.
Right.
Issues.
Do you have any questions? I'll be glad to talk to him too.
Do you have anything for Mr. Lewis, or no? Or?
I don't know.
Just the fax that came.
Okay, just the fax.
Uh, he faxed last Wednesday, I believe, asked for more.
I see.
He faxed last Wednesday, I do believe it was, uh, asking for more information. Dawn emailed him and called him both, spoke with him, sent him all the information. And then we received another fax on Friday. That was basically the same request, but there was a few more extra sentences. Just asking for the same thing, wanting to know the details of the actual procedure for calculating the amount charged for the abatement. He was told this was a one-size-fits-all application, which resulted in billing for double the amount of time actually spent.
So we're like, we're dealing with three separate nuisance situations here?
Correct. Yeah, uh, Mr. Slocum, Lewis, and Will Banks.
And can you address the damage that was done by Bob Brown? That's in the fax dated, oh, three nineteen.
I, I don't have that information.
We don't know if the sidewalk was really damaged?
No, I don't know that.
Okay, so I guess we'll close the public he, hearing at this time.
My motion is out of order, I presume, so I'll remake it.
Okay.
I move that we approve this list of nuisances as presented.
You can make a motion for all three?
Well, it's the whole, it's all.
The whole list.
Okay.
Twenty, twenty-five people on the list.
Twenty-three, yeah.
We're not gonna do most of them.
There's more than that, I'm sorry. I didn't look at it, but, uh, we had three responses.
Responses. Okay.
So there's a motion on the floor to accept this schedule of assessments, all of them. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so, motion by Flornoy, second by Hallie.
I wanna, wanna quickly answer Paul. So I just listened real quickly to the council meeting. So thank you, Jason, for always recording them. You don't have to wonder what happened. Scott informed the council, but we didn't vote. He already had the authority. He just wanted us to be aware. He'd sent two certified letters about the tree. Both came back unopened. So then he reached out, and he had been trying to work it out the year prior, so twenty eighteen. He said he got interrupted by his knee surgery, and then he reached back out, and he just wasn't getting anywhere with, with, uh, property owner. So he was basically informing us. Uh, it was already a done deal just because of our, our nuisance laws.
So he sent the first notice back in two thousand eighteen?
He started, yeah, he sent two certified letters that neither were opened by the property owner, so then he called him, and they had a phone conversation about it. And then some time passed, and then he, he rekindled it in twenty eighteen, that spring.
Twenty nineteen?
Sorry, twenty nineteen. Rekindled in twenty nineteen.
This is typical of Scott's experience with us, and by the time he gets here, he's already been working on it for over a year.
Uh, Katie asked him what the cost would be, and he said he wasn't able to say because it would be billed afterwards. But he said it's a large tree. So we don't know if the five hundred dollars is real. It just, it's just some, it's a number he's told us, but for a tree that size, I don't think you can get it done for anything less than a thousand.
And our city attorney said there were additional costs. It's a new cost.
Right.
That's a lot of time. I mean, two thousand eighteen's a lot of time.
It was, yeah. Scott said it was a very large tree, and it was an ash tree, and, and what he said, that it was checked and there was no more ash borer, that's not how ash borer works. Once it's in there, it's, kills the tree.
Yeah, you don't get it.
Yeah. You don't get it back out, exactly.
Sounds like plenty of notice.
So out of this whole list.
The equipment required tells us it was a big tree, and the amount, amount of time there of the labor cost tells us it was a big tree. So it doesn't matter who took it down, that it took a lot of time and effort to do.
Yeah, and it's possible the property owner could've got a lower cost. It's quite possible he could've had he acted on it, but he didn't, so.
Yeah.
So the city came in.
Yeah. So out of this whole list, we had three replies? So everybody on this list got the same notification? Three people chose to reply?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? Rebecca, please call the roll.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Pam.
Yes.
To Hill.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Okay, so that motion passed unanimously for those schedule of assessments. Okay, so we have a resolution, uh, amending the fiscal year twenty-one budget. Do you wanna talk about that, Aaron?
Yeah, um, as some of us know, we were, uh, adding some financial issue, uh, finances into the budget, particularly under, uh, uh, employee benefits and under FICA and IFRS for a possible addition to our, uh, to a, a possible, the, the, uh, department addition. Um, at this point, it appears that there won't be that addition, so we are going back to the budget and redo, taking those funds out. So that's reducing the levy request to the state from sixteen dollars and fourteen cents down to fifteen dollars and sixty-three cents, which is actually seven cents less than what our current fiscal year is. So we're actually gonna end up, in the end, lowering our levy again by seven cents, so that's a good thing. Um, after everything is finalized with that other department, we can discuss the pros and cons of that later, but, uh, we'll wait till the contract and stuff is signed for that other proj, project to, uh, go that route.
I make the motion that we move to approve the amended fiscal year twenty-one budget.
Second.
Moved by Flornoy, second by To Hill. Any further discussion?
Thanks for all the work you did on the ambulance project.
Yes.
Yes.
The other department.
Do you wanna talk about that now, or do we wanna wait till?
No, I'd, I think we, I'd like to wait till the contract's all said and done.
Okay.
Maybe the ambulance board can, you're on the ambulance board.
I am.
So maybe you can make a report when they make their decision.
All right. Some decision has been made, but there's a little, a little piece to go. Okay.
Rebecca, please call the roll.
Flornoy.
Yes.
To Hill.
Yes.
Cam.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Okay.
On a side note, before you get started.
Okay, go on.
There, don't, I wouldn't, I, yes, I put a lot of work into that, but Rebecca put a lot of work into the budget, and Scott put a lot of work into it too, so those are the folks that really need the thank you. I'm okay with, yeah. Good job, whatever. They, they, they.
Good job, whatever, Aaron.
Yeah, you're right. They, they did the work, well.
I'll second, good job, whatever.
Great job, Rebecca. So let's talk about the Natty Land Committee. I had a really good conversation with Ron Blair regarding the Natty Long, Natty Land Committee and where it's been, historical perspective, et cetera, et cetera, and kind of where they're going. So, uh, tonight I want to appoint officially the committee. Um, that would include Ron Blair, Carrie Beatty, Lee Shetman, and Mark Smith. Mark Smith, uh, is the gentleman who bought AJ's Bike Ship Shop. Lee Shetman is the president of the HOA Silver Lakes Division, Homeowners Association. And then Carrie Beatty is out at MIU. And just so you know, ex-officio members are Sean Morrissey, Pam Craft, and Calvin. And, uh, their plan is to meet in May. They will be presenting a, um, agenda to Rebecca before they meet. And then they plan to come to the council and present, kind of get you updated on, on what's going on and, uh, where their progress has been. So I think we're moving that forward. I would just entertain, uh, you approving those bo- those, uh, committee members, Ron, Carrie, Lee Shetman, and Mark Smith.
I move we approve the appointments by the way to the Natty Land Committee.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, uh, moved by Flornoy, second by Gandy. Any other discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
To Hill.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes. I also have an additional appointment to the Park and Rec, uh, Board, Taylor Book. Um, she is wife of Brandon Book. Many people know Brandon, that's why I mentioned that. Uh, she's a teacher, they have two young children, and, uh, she has agreed to be on this board. I think she'll be a good representative of the young families in Fairfield. And that also helps keep our board gender balanced, so I would request that you approve the appointment of Taylor Book to the Park and Rec Board. So moved. Moved by Anderson.
Second.
Second by To Hill. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those same, uh, pose, same sign? Okay. Um, wanted to update you a little bit on what's happening regarding, uh, emergency management, working with public health and COVID-nineteen. We talked about this in, uh, tonight. We had a virtual town hall meeting, Aaron and I did, and, uh, we had quite a few people listen in, so it was kind of fun. But I wanted to update you, because we've had a lot of questions regarding, uh, what MIU is doing, so we, we got a updated letter from, uh, the president of the university, John Haglen, and I just wanted to tell a few points of the things that they're doing. So they did cancel their spring break, uh, to prevent students and others from traveling to impacted areas and, uh, bringing the virus back home here. So they have implemented a campus-wide travel ban outside of Jefferson County for all students and employees. They are starting online teaching today. They might have some in-classroom teaching, but, uh, they are trying to keep that under those ten students and, and primarily work with online, um, teaching. They have restricted dining hall access. It is only for, uh, students, faculty, and staff, no outside guests. Uh, they are staggering their times and trying to keep people from not gathering, and they have a security officer that actually goes through the lunchroom to make sure that people are not gathering together. Their campus events, um, have been canceled. The recreation is closed. They're doing a lot of business remotely in their different departments. Uh, again, keeping mindful of social distancing and self-care. They have put up additional sinks and hand sanit- sanitizer near their lunchroom and dining hall, and also they have professional servers serving their food. Um, Marshy School is also closed until further notice, so those are some things that people have been concerned about, that we've gotten questions from different areas, so I wanted to update the council on what, what's happening there. Um, there also has been a change, uh, we've had a resignation at the CVB. Uh, Terry Baker is now the interim director. Um, and their board is working with that, and I'm sure they'll report to us at some point in the future of what their plan is. So. That's all I have for the mayor's report. Uh, John, do you have anything?
Maybe one thing. I've had a couple of calls. Uh, and the community, I think, has some questions about what I'm going to refer to as lockdown. It's happening everywhere, but we aren't i- in a position where the council has met for any purpose about discussion of lockdown that I'm aware of.
No.
Uh, the mayor has the, um, underlying peacekeeping powers within this body, and there is a part of the Iowa code that might get us to that point if we had to have civilian curfews or martial law. I haven't seen anybody reaching out to us, begging us to do that kind of stuff. I think we're being very proactive about being careful about our contacts and doing the things that we've been directed to do by health people. And that's probably as far as that needs to go, as far as that discussion. Uh, this council has repeatedly in the past showed that it's not inclined to apply heavy hand. I don't think our mayor is heavy-handed, and I don't think that our code encourages that kind of stuff. If we had an emergency situation, um, I'll give you, for instance, uh, twice, the city of Kiasakwa during, uh, two thousand and ten and during nineteen ninety-three, they had to have martial law. They don't have a police department down there. They had people riding around flat-bottom boats, sightseeing in the middle of floodwaters in downtown Kiasakwa, and they just, you don't do that. Their, uh, ordinances aren't that much different than ours as far as who has the power to say, no, don't do that. Uh, we aren't in a situation like that as far as the natural disaster type of emergency versus a virus emergency. But I think we are doing what our health professionals asked us to do that met with us before. Uh, and I don't know that on a short notice, if we had to get together because something had completely outbroken among us, that we wouldn't act immediately, but uh, the fact that that power is there, uh, people in the community, they're asking if it's being considered. I don't, this board, to my knowledge, hasn't asked for that. The mayor hasn't asked for it, Aaron hasn't asked for it, so I think that should be said, though, that the fact is, you know, if things got worse, uh, we want to have, uh, controlled community as far as people not getting frenzied. Uh, we don't want anything like mob activity and so forth. I've already heard in some of the metro areas, uh, that, uh, people are following travel restrictions and stuff, that there are certain places where people are unhappy about being locked down. Our governor hasn't encouraged anybody, I don't believe, to lock down, so, uh, and I think that's probably the mentality, uh, with our community and our other community leaders besides this group, so.
I did watch the governor's conference today. Um, there was questions about the shelter in place. They have no plans for it at this point. So, um, certainly she would have to call for it before we would consider it here. Um, and, you know, so we'll see what happens. But, uh, again, I'm just encouraging people to stay home, especially if you're sick, and, uh, stay home as much as you can. The next week or two are gonna, I think, gonna be the important, uh, timeframes. Um, we are surrounded on three counties by people that have been tested positive or in the hospital. And, um, the, basically what we're trying to prevent is our healthcare being overrun with people that are so sick they have to be in the hospital. So I did a quick look at our comprehensive plan to look at our demographics. Thirty-three percent of our people are over the age of sixty. And those people certainly have more risk. Plus people who have other health, underlying health conditions. So if we have over ten thousand people, you can see if only one percent of our people were very, very sick and need to be hospitalized, our hospital could not handle that. And, uh, that, that's what we're trying to avoid. Because nobody, no doctor there, I'm sure, wants to play God about who's going to live and who's not. And we have sharing agreements with other hospitals, but if other hospitals are in the same place, or we can't get people to Iowa City, that's what we're trying to avoid. So, um, you know, I, I just say try to enjoy your time at home as much as possible with your families and, uh, go out as little as possible. And, uh, two or three weeks out of our life, it'll be over. And then we can get back to our lives, hopefully, in that amount of time. It might take a little bit longer, but, um, you know, let's just be all mindful of we might not be sick, but we could be a carrier and make someone else who is has vulnerabilities, they could become sick. So that's what we're trying to avoid.
And to the mayor's point, to John's point, I think the, the key, I think, for citizens as far as the city government is concerned, they want to see that we're proactive. Or sort of ahead of it as best we can. I think we are. So, the idea of lockdown, they, they just want to know, I think citizens just want to know, are you guys paying attention to this? Are you doing things to make sure we're taken care of? I think, I think the city is.
The, the next step for us would be, that's pretty hot. Uh, the next step for us would be, we would issue a local declaration of emergency. Um, that I'm, I'm not exactly up to speed as far as what that would do after the governor's already done that, but there might be some other things through FEMA or through the state or federal government that would help us locally if we did that. At this point in time, I don't know if we need to do that or not. I'm, I'm still doing some research with it. I was watching a number of city administrators talk about it on the grapevine email process here today. But I think we're okay as far as that's concerned right now, but as far as the next step, that would probably be our next step.
Um, we did get some, share some good information with the town hall meeting tonight. Um, one thing that we're trying to get up and running is a one-stop website under the emergency management that would have tabs for city, county, uh, business and public health. And, um, we're getting some help, I think, from, uh, some, a couple of community members who do websites, and hopefully that will get up and running. Um, the governor's conference today also mentioned about four million dollars available for business. And, um, that's available through, uh, the FIDA website, and I'm sure there's a link on the chamber too, so. Some of these things are starting to come about, and, uh, as that funnels down, you know, we'll get it out to the community as much as possible until we understand what federally, what the, what, what's going to come through federally. But there are some stopgap measures for our businesses right now coming out, uh, from the state, so people can pay attention to that. Thanks, John. Hope that clarifies it for people. Um, I will say, I've had a couple people ask, could we, you know, put put barriers up at the edges of town so nobody people, nope, buddy can come in and go out. I think physically, just physically, it would be near impossible to do that. So there are no plans for that. Okay, so. Okay, uh, any other committee and board reports? We have nothing on the agenda right now, so. Okay, Aaron.
Um, the minutes that you have there, to probably shorten this up, does anybody have any questions about our Je- Jefferson County City Fairfield meeting as it regards streets? I think it was a fairly productive meeting. I'm pretty happy with where we came out of that. You know, Melanie and Scott Klein from the engineer's office are going to have to do some work as far as finalizing some other street agreements, but we've got, we got some of the more important things taken care of. Um, the one thing I, I think, I'm going to ask the water and sewer committee to have a meeting probably before our next council meeting. Um, we had a business call-in today regarding a high-water bill and then a late fee. Obviously with, and this was a restaurant, so obviously with, uh, with all the restaurants being closed, their high-water bill was they're not sure why they had a high-water bill. And so they're, they're struggling to take care of that, so I would like to have them, the water committee have a discussion about that, and then we can bring that back to the full council, if that's okay with, uh, with the water committee and then the council in general for that possibly relief. I don't, I don't know where we, I, I don't want to, uh, put a, a large burden on our girls up front that are handling those bills, but I also want to look at, you know, can we help them? So. If that's okay with the council, I would like to do that, um.
And I have a motion to move that to the water and sewer committee?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Moved by Flornoy, second by Ham to move, um, that particular issue to the water and sewer committee. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign?
Are, i- is this for the one particular case, or are we, are we looking at the big picture on this?
Um, it's one case at this point, but I don't know how long this is going to be.
Right.
And I don't know how wide we're going to go with businesses and stuff, so I, I, I would like to maybe take a broader stroke and look at maybe what we can do.
Absolutely.
And that's all I have.
Okay, great. Anything else for the good of the order? Okay, take a motion to adjourn?
Did we vote on, did we? Pat, did we?
Did I, did we vote?
We didn't vote on the motion to.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay.
It leaves very quickly sometimes, right? Okay, let's vote on that motion.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
To Hill.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Okay, that was, motion was carried unanimously. Okay, now we'll take it, a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Moved by Flornoy.
Second.
Second by To Hill. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Great, thanks.